Hello, it's everyone. What? It's been in the ground, boy.
Hey, thank you all very much for joining us for the city council's regular meeting of April Monday, April 1. And thank you. Monday, April 21. We will kick it off with a call order and then allegiance and then we'll get over that.
Okay, which did? No, we're just glad we get this. Mayor Walk of God and closer than ever in your spirit and tune with his will so that you will never lose your footing or courage along the path of life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for its unity and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank you all for being attendance at our regularly scheduled meeting for April. Not back a few weeks for a very few meetings. If any member of the committee in the audience desire to speak on any item listed for action on the agenda, please complete the form, registration card located on the table at the back of the room and submit it to our city manager. One of those. As they have confirmed their role of all, we will now bring this meeting to order.
Okay. Wow, where do we go?
Mayor's school? Okay, approval and consent. This is agenda item number three, approval and consent agenda. Any council member may request a mayor, but if anyone for further consideration or discussion, otherwise we will ask for a.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the claims, there was a sales tax incentive payment. Is that, is that the county deal?
That would be out on the road, so it's just a little bit.
Oh, that's a quarterly payment? Does that end at the end of this year?
I can't remember. Last quarter, 27?
The last quarter, 27, yes. Okay, alright. And then, did much change in the hazard mitigation plan?
No.
Okay, not much. I would just say, I'm really more into pages.
On behalf of all the city team, we were so thrilled the county does hazard mitigation plan. We do not have to do one on our own. Having done it previously, I'm sure everyone read all four hundred and two pages.
Yes, I got to.
There was a post document, there's another thirty some pages that are not public access for threat assessments. They did a great job. Ken Nelson was involved in that. They had great hologists. Doc Marshall was involved in it. Oklahoma County was great to work with. I just really appreciate the agenda because we're so thankful they do it for us and we're pissed by how we're not at the order.
Okay, just curious. And you're good on the civil elections.
Just like you already mentioned too.
I'll make a motion for consent.
I'll say it.
Motion number six, second one, John, I'm called Royal Braxton.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah.
Bubba.
Yeah.
Melanie.
Yay.
David. Yeah. Motion passes five to zero.
Agenda item number four. Consideration of Resolution Zero Four Dash Twenty Twenty One Dash Two Zero Two Five Charter. Approving the agreement of our ditch reimbursement compliance service with Hilltop Securities Assessment Management LLC.
Okay, it's not getting into the weeds here. It's gonna be us asleep. What return is required from the bonds to basically ensure that the interest that we earned off of it, whether there is a tax due via IRS or not, that it's not something that you staff, that is specialized, pretty much well on finance practice. So the help of Jeff, we reached out to a few firms that specialize in this. We reviewed three of them. We recommend Hilltop Securities Assessment because they gave us flat price to complete everything. And this will work for our twenty eighteen, twenty twenty bonds. These are supposed to be under than five years of drawn sale. Yes, that is more than five years. We're just, if not on that, I don't think we're, if we're coming out there, we should get assessed for our twenty two series orders.
Good. So it's exactly, this does exactly what for his insurance?
Interest to determine if, and the interest that we earned on the bonds is tax.
Oh, okay. And is this, is that by third party? Your side?
It's he got it. It was on the case that there are companies involved.
Oh, I offered to flip a coin.
Okay.
We sent these for information. Okay.
I said.
Motion by Braxton, second by Melanie, I'm called Royal Braxton.
Yeah.
Melanie.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah.
David.
Yeah.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Agenda item number five, consideration of Resolution Zero Four Dash Four One Dash Two Zero Two Five Delta. Approving the contract for residential and commercial municipal solid waste and recycling services by Waste Connections.
Have resolution and our updated contract with Waste Connections. We've been with Waste Connections since. Who, who you guys want them out? We've got a great relationship with Waste Connections. They do a wonderful job. We tend to think we're the bigger client. I'm not sure if that will make that public or not. But we just have great.
Our shirt is true.
They serve the community very well. So we renegotiated another ten year contract. Rates, we've talked about everything in this economy, there's a price cost. Everything's going up, believe it or not, we found you one thing that locked on in the past ten years. And that's been City of the Village Track Stakes. So next month we'll be reviewing back in accordance to adjust our adjusted increase, our sanitation rates to keep up a little bit of that. We did not put this out for an RFP simply because we're very satisfied with the service we have. Kind of feel we can put this out on RFP. We got a low ball price, it costs you more than a ton. We have a very, very dense population. It's routes that are waste managers really helping those in, got the spot on. So we're just content with these like continued services and like.
So you don't think we need to put that out for a bit to waste management or Republic or?
I really don't. I visited with Republic. They were very hungry, very anxious, but I showed them the rates and said, oh, yeah. They couldn't hear much back from them on it. So it's a huge investment to come in with new dumpsters and everything and we said it, try to run it. And we're just very content with our local staff and our most customers that we actually have. There's nothing verbal, so you're easy to try to complicate.
And isn't Waste, I'm sorry.
No.
Isn't Waste Connections like a subsidiary of Waste Management?
No.
Or are they different companies?
Pretty separate. I mean, you got a public waste management, Waste Connections.
Oh, okay.
Very independent, international.
I pay some little.
The decade ago, we reviewed the contract as well. We were in the same situation. So we.
So does this lock us in with business of Waste Connections for the next ten years or what if Waste Management or another company came along and gave us better rates?
You get rates. It's a service you can't get. And I've done the trash conversion before and I would prefer a member to have to do that again on my daughter. It's just, you know, they're all three great companies. They all three do great work. It's just a matter of getting those routes figured out and route set. Waste Connections knows who are peculiar customers or. They've done a great job of setting them and they've purchased into Waste Connections in the second row and we've got it. Then we negotiated a good rate to move us forward and we'll keep following services.
Okay, so what are the odds of the obvious claw machines like a Mercedes, mountain eels, like in here, big garden, dead about not picking up trees and this? That's just my only thought. I know Waste Management has one and we all have.
They have them. You pay them.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. Can we get storm cover or storm, can we get rain management? We have access to that cleanup, but for someone that just cuts down a tree, does a downwind, has a tree trimmer set, if they not occur.
Yeah.
That's a resident.
Okay.
And they have small on. I mean, we've looked at buying them multiple times and the cost doesn't greatly outweigh. I mean, we would have to pass that cost essentially. So to us, the way we're doing it seems like the best cost savings to pass on.
I'm trying one thing. Bob made a career history. Bob and I were last that were, when we had the first presentation for Waste Connection. And it was, it was one of those things for everything he said he would do, he did. And we had had challenges with previous companies that pick up, in fact, we've done it ourselves for a while and that, that has ups and downs as well. I would follow what they've said and we, the results have been significantly improved from the day they started. I don't know, this is early, but they were, they were training somebody for management. Maybe I had to do it too, maybe they changed the train on them. But the trash was going down, down our street and I happened to know the guy that was walking behind the truck. Being, being observant and then I think they had another management with discussing why you do this, why you do that and all that stuff. I mean, the training was significant for something that you'd think would be as simple as trash management. It's just so fun to see that happen. That wasn't the most obvious because that's true. Every time I see him walking down the street, it's made it true. I say, hey, have you gotten to stop drinking yet? And so that usually plights them up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure they're pleased with that. And how long is it before your next letter comes in?
I would like to say the same thing, though. I don't, you know, we went through, I don't know if you remember this, we went through a process where they gave, they gave us points for individuals and you took those points and you got magazine.
That was recycling.
And I mean, they made it through. I mean, we were almost. I got Sports Illustrated for something like that. I mean, you know, but it was just something else that, you know, we're getting twice what we took it. But I have never had a problem.
Speaking of recycling, this.
They were late to me when I got here, you know. Think I'm some guy on a job.
On the subject of recycling, this combines the seven ways to recycle contract of one. Previously, we had two separate contracts because they were done off term. So we're consolidating one contract.
And I had recently a trash can lose a wheel. Yeah, and I called up here thinking that I was gonna end up, you know, with our asset, we would come and replace it, but I understand it's now your old opportunity to replace it for us. Whoever I was talking with said, why don't, why don't we just use you as a guinea pig and we'll see if it works or not? And I said, great. And like two days later, I had a trash can. So I reported in that mission accomplished. All the way through that, we go there, put GPS track.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
John, second one, Melanie, I'm called John.
Yeah.
Melanie.
Yay.
Braxton.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yeah.
David.
Yeah.
Motion passes four to one. Congratulations.
Um, move on to agenda item number, agenda item number six, discussion regarding meeting dates for May twenty twenty council meetings. For me, this is plain game of this.
No, we want to clarify that my charter, the first Monday of the month at seven thirty is a council meeting to swear to the head about the oath of office for the new elected council members. Welcome Keith Spankler of the council, a little farewell from Melanie. But that is an election to mayor, the vice mayor. Regular monthly meeting is scheduled for Monday, the twelfth. Councilman Allen will not be available on this date. So we'll have a discussion to see if we can shift that date or.
Keith won't be available either, so. If we want to pressure back, if we want to pressure back, he'll be here.
Can you zoom?
That whole. It's not big, maybe.
The list of the state legislature restricted your teleconference to the county in the physical jurisdiction in which you are elected. So you don't need to say building, but you have to be, tell it makes no sense.
Well, that's why it's weird.
They say your office.
Party for the fire.
Did you say was that what?
Is there a requirement? Do we have to make a swear by?
Swear. The first.
Has to be the first, not the.
It's in the charter. So.
First Monday of May, seven thirty.
See, I made it so.
So.
Anything hasn't happened, but the twelfth.
Do you, do you think we, I mean, do you think we could just cancel the May meeting since we're having a May fifth swearing again and then just anything that just happened in June? Because I mean, that's, that's still, I mean, since we pushed this and one of it still is, you know, there might be enough to be on the agenda in three weeks. I mean, if it is pricing, maybe throw it on May fifth and then.
We'll try to, we'll try to break front load with the May fifth and then just we need another one.
And we need to do a special weekend.
But we have a budget on that. We've got to get the news.
Yeah. And that would be pretty much June is when we'll have the draft and just leave, do the budget review in June, May, May. Get you drafted mid-May, but it probably be better early June to really have that formulated.
What we're gonna meet at the end before you draft it up and after, before we have it, could we maybe talk about it?
Yeah.
Can we go? It's not like you're ordering. It may be something I'm gonna have to track up.
Yeah, I work with Captain Brutus Land. That's kind of what I'm waiting on to pitch out back the other day. I probably won't have that ready for May. Why don't we plan a meeting for May and then we can assess when when it would be, obviously, May twelve would be a good question.
So we'll, we'll do the May fifth and then maybe do May twelve or?
Probably not to May twelve too, to be all in here to be here, but we can. We'll see how it goes.
So I was saying.
I'm bored with being gone last week and just having.
You're still.
We got a patient for. I am available the nineteenth.
Okay, so we need to have a special on the nineteenth.
We could do this.
We can call.
I'm cool with that.
I'm also out on the fifth, so unfortunately.
John.
Back to back meetings.
Lot of.
Yeah, so the nineteenth I will.
Thank you, John.
Especially, I know, it's okay. I'll save my.
I'll probably set this up and out for a budget workshop, probably some kind of third week, maybe correct the basic feedback word before you draft. Something for doing reflection story. You're big enough.
I'm against Charles, this is.
A sicko.
Oh.
Why you suggested what?
Chargers.
Oh, yes, please. I love charges. Oh, you go to Costco, you get the Costco charges because we're the best.
We need a little picture.
Yeah. Oh, we're in the legs.
It's a felony.
So the special meeting is at six thirty?
Seven.
It'll be seven thirty. I'm sorry, the one on the nineteen. Well, okay. We're just in May.
Okay, but the only meeting right now that we're having May.
Yeah, we have God there, which you got to do something.
What?
We have.
We have God memory.
Then you too could be the mayor. So we know the May fifth will be a meeting for sure.
We have one hundred and thirty.
At seven thirty. At seven thirty.
It's May eight and kind of.
It'll just be sparse.
Yes.
Of people.
And unless. Part of. I thought this was clinic association. Finally got the first. That's good for me. So we're just gonna stick right now, we're gonna stick with May fifth at seven thirty to swear in the new.
Swearing is a new one, y'all, right? That's right. The new post will be swearing to you.
So the May twelfth is probably canceled.
May twelfth.
I'll be.
And then so we'll then, we'll meet again after May fifth on our regular scheduled meeting in June unless we need to do something in a special meeting for asking. Does that make sense? Does that, does that sound right?
Our calendar on our website, we have these updated.
Okay, there you go.
And then the fifth one is at seven thirty.
Yes.
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 Ask per the charter.
Yeah, ask per the charter.
Okay.
Got that now? We're all good?
Yep.
Yep. Let me get a little off.
Was that, was that? Well, that was it. That was for agenda item number six. Agenda item number seven, review of reports. Who wants to lead?
Report.
Financials.
Financials in February, we was sent out during the month of April, March's reports. Uh, over your change in general fund balance, positive seven hundred thirteen thousand year to date through March. Bit change on our bond summary. Then any key highlights on financial reports. Questions, I'll jump over to your sales tax reports going to April. February is sent out, March is probably, it was released yesterday or I don't know, last week. Going through month of April, sales tax is about four hundred and four thousand above budget projections, which is really good because it's current taxes, public projections. Looking at where we spent based on the general fund, public safety and capital improvements. Your April receipts is for the month and then year to date is, you recall, as a capital improvements, about six hundred eighty thousand year to date, seventy, about seventy five thousand dollars received in April. Sales tax and use tax. I haven't done that.
It's like we got some mail there.
We do, we have a big agreement on the other side, so. Use tax is down two hundred one thousand above budget projections. Got a little aggressive on our projections from last year, but still combined, we are well over our head on budget. All tax revenue were about a hundred fifty thousand dollars above budget projection, two months remaining in the year. So we hit our present projections on.
Taxes. Did you see a big decline after the name brand holding went down?
No, not like maybe until.
You don't have a waste in that month.
Yeah, probably stage of the year, not been carrying so much.
Kind of here this too. I did that glance at it earlier this month, but I absolutely sent it. Didn't even remember that.
And the use tax, that's just Amazon stuff.
Uh, use tax, it was, it was fresh in the Amazon, I don't remember, but anything that is purchased and liquid, purchased outside to liquid, so.
Will you make me think of Sheen? I try, I try to use Amazon. Will you make me think of that?
Me, Tina?
No.
Sheen.
S H E N.
Yes, sheen, something's that quality.
I'm a little more of a Sheen.
See, I'm running back all the time, publication thing.
That's what three dollar. And you didn't pay that off. They'll say that's what Harper brings. Surely, surely you don't want to.
I did an update from Abigail. She wants to be able to make it tonight. They've had Storytime with the stars this month. It's every Wednesday from six thirty to seven thirty PM, using the planetarium. So it's well intended and super cute. We've added a new kiddos rotation program every Thursday from ten to eleven AM, which includes music, story time, playtime. Twenty twenty five vision board programs for adults on April twenty eighth from six to eight PM. And calling all teams to look for two volunteers to help with summer evening program. Some managers update. We are, we're kind of busy right now, very busy about knee deep in budgets, I'm drowning in it.
You're not drowning.
Are drowning.
Or again, drowning. I feel like I need to do a section now. I'm trying to find a light jacket, you know, I'm in that. We'll get a little more intense in the next couple of weeks. Ben has been vacationing and we should be able to hammer it out when she gets back in mid-May. We have started working with Carson Group on our HR consulting and personnel services. We're meeting with them on Wednesdays. It gets a bit overwhelming from time to time, I don't breathe and we think that's gonna be moving forward pretty well. Street projects are wrapping up, but it should anticipate the sidewalks going out to be any day now. I was thinking of having them up to bid already.
Really? Do you know about what's gonna start?
Sidewalks?
Well, streets did sidewalk.
Streets were getting close to wrapping up.
Okay.
Didn't. Not take that as a day like I planned to.
Okay.
We will get status update on that. We have, um, so we're looking at for, to put on the civic plaza and then back and forth with different types of signage. We came back to the platform. On plaza itself is nice. We will get some freestanding signs and we had issues with where to place them and then have the other, before we have a dozen more out there. Take place. So Sean and Catherine's daughters have been helpful in doing this. Jessica Lerner with Law has been instrumental in putting here together, working the design. So we're hoping to have this, have this up in a couple of months. Just recognize we have the civic plaza.
That's big.
So let's cut it together well.
Can you do so, there was not an estimate on the size of your projects gonna start?
Yes, we failed to prepare that after I did it for you. Can I, I'll be set back out. The street summary, any other sidewalks or?
Do you know who else started working on drainage stuff?
After the sidewalks.
After the project was complete or just after the?
After the designers, I'm starting with the design. One thing we're working, we're working with Cassidy. On Britain, we had a ten foot called by Motor Trail and that's their original entrance coming in. And it kind of, there were lanes that come off of their original gates and crotches into it. So we have a little bit kind of going around that and moving through it. Nothing, we decided they're gonna shorten their length down a little bit, but we're shortening it to ten foot down to six feet to accommodate through that. So we're gonna resolve that. It is an important part for them and we respect that. Just because it's in the, right away, doesn't necessarily mean that it needs to. The original gate is not, but of course, when the original gate is built, that was two lane road, now it's two lane, four lanes and.
Man, can you say something? Oh, and you're saying that the, you didn't do the particular street before, could I give a little bit of feedback?
Sure.
Just so that, I wanted to be on record, just so you know. I wanted to go on record to say as a, as a resident and as a council person, I did experience the, you know, the work being done on the street and and so it just so happens that in front of my driveway, I did the, right before. and so, um, it, it just so happens that in front of my driveway, I did it right before, kind of thing, use your brain. And so, we, we did have a tricky time getting there now, well, we got it now, but then they had to then come back, the dry out, pour the concrete, and then now we're in the phase of, uh, preparing for the next phase, so. Um, but it looks good, um, I did get a lot of, uh, I got a couple of calls regarding, um, you don't have to put the speed on the spat if you don't want to. I said, that's not up to me, I said, but if, you know, if you have any feedback.
Listen, I don't mind, I'd say this is John.
I told this to the resident, this to the resident, I, I never know, I said, hey, you know, your, your voice, you definitely wanna hear your voice, but, you know, it's more than judging yourself. Anyway, I just wanted to get that little bit of feedback that I got to experience in first hand. Um, I'm looking forward to it being better, but I tell you, having that concrete street there, all the years that I've lived on that street, it is gonna be interesting to see asphalt. Um, and I am, I, I'd also go on record saying that those streets aren't necessarily made for dump trucks and those huge trucks that Cassidy was sitting up and down in. I don't know what we're giving feedback, but anyway, um, and we, it did not have cracks for years. Um, it's really interesting, but I want to go on record to, for the city to understand that we're having to, you know, of course, every street has wear day. But I do believe that part of it was, uh, because of some of the extra tired traffic that we were getting on that street, but I'm glad we did get fixed from the other end. Thank you.
Have some updates from the Village Arts Association, and fortunately Audrey is here tonight, so I'm gonna let her cover this now, so I'll smooth it up.
Hello. You should see my husband, um, he's here in spirit. On my tattoo.
Okay, all right, all right, where'd, where'd you get those made at?
I ordered online.
Right.
I can't remember the name of it. If you're interested. You gotta really allow. I want to say a couple things for artists and artists, thank you, Melanie, for your show on Saturday, it was just a nice. I'm gonna miss you. And also, I didn't know Voice Mentions was going to be good this evening, and they are sponsored by T V A, and so.
Thank you.
Very much. So, um, my name is Audrey Sousa, and I am the Children's Art Director for the Village Arts Association. I'm excited to update you on the Village Arts Festival taking place on October eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as well as other excitement events we have planned. We are pleased to announce that we have received numerous applications for artists, performers, and food vendors. And we fully expect all food spaces and performance slots to be filled.
How many goods are you gonna have?
Uh, a minimum of thirty for artists and our maximum of forty. And we already have, I believe, thirty-nine people have applied to be artists, so we.
Oh, wow, that's awesome.
That makes big issues.
Are you willing to do this for today? Which we're doing for two.
I'll be sure.
But don't have you. Okay, um, for my, oh, sorry.
The boots, artist, artist boots, thirty?
Right, okay. Um, artists' applications will remain open until May twenty-third, with other categories posted shortly after, so we will stop taking applications for the farmers and the food trucks out there. Within the week following. Um, we will prioritize local village artists and businesses when allocating spots, ensuring our community is prominent in the future. And we have also reached out to some of the local schools, public and private, to save some of their students' electric form, as well as some of the charter schools that village students attend, like classroom and, um, Hardin. I did not reach out to Hardin.
Okay.
Do you know students that attend Hardin?
I, I do.
Okay.
I have one over there as well.
I have one.
They have four big schools.
They have two schools.
Yes, they have Hardin Charter Prep, and they have, uh, Hardin Independence is the one I think you're.
I did, I did.
That's the middle school, and then they have Hardin Partners.
Hardin.
Hardin Partners.
Oh, well, that's. I did reach out to the. But I never got, but I'm glad you mentioned.
Um, and one other, um, Millwood has been in the, in the city of the village before, back when they had the grand opening for Walmart, their band was present. They're a really great band, so. Millwood, and they have pretty good arts to work with.
Okay, I always wanted suggestions.
So I'll, I'll make a list of each of them.
Um, okay. Additionally, we plan to showcase the artwork of a local village artist, if possible, on our accessible T-shirts. Um, we've had several artists in the village, um, ranging from fiber artists who do crochet and things like that, and also painters. Um, so if they are able to feature him on T-shirt, we'd like to do that. We'd do it in the future. Um, and with over nine hundred people already expressing interest to our then-onraised vivid Instagram, we're confident that it'll be a strong public turnout, because, you know, it's monumental and it's not a lot of crap, and not everybody even responds to, um, to post posts. So, you were talking about sell stuff. Should we begin a nice little inflection? Um, also, I wanted to mention, and this is something that we do need to discuss with the city manager, but, um, we would like to launch a community art project at the festival, um, to create a rock garden for, um, the city. It would be a small place, and it's based on, um, places like the VA hospital and some of the schools and homes that we have rock gardens where people around will paint the rocks and put them into, into dark messages of their individual style. Um, and it's just a fun place to just come to the different personalities of people who live in the village, um, different ages, different backgrounds, just we thought it would be, and I need representation of the people who actually live here. Um, so that's something that we'd like to bring forth and maybe find a little place to learn more parts, or maybe even a side plaza to have a small space for. Um, in addition to the Village Arts Festival, we have been very busy, and I see a variety of events. On April fifth, we successfully hosted a bake sale fundraiser at the Village Mazar, organized by Room Three Vintage, which is a local business next to Johnny's. Um, and the weather was really awful that day, it was raining and freezing, but it was, um, actually a very big success. So, um, we want to extend our heartfelt thanks to Uptown Road Street Bakery for the generous donation of baked goods, and to our executive board members, Mark Ayers and Sarah Ayers and Kathy Tigner who's here. Um, they were baking and icing absolute chickens. I, I was not able to interview, but oh my goodness, uh, Kathy was living in Germany, and she baked a whole bunch of pictures and gave them to me, so. Um, thank you so much, Kathy. So, um, here's some of them next. On May first, we are talking alcohol slinging at the classic, David Bowie movie labyrinth at the village library. On May seventeenth, uh, local volunteer artists will be engaging vibrants at the mural on the wall outside the village general welfare. And we already have the prototype of that put together. And on June second, uh, we will be having another movie screening at the library, but this one will be indoors and in the afternoon, so that children can come, and we'll just have a lights out. Um, we're encouraged to make it, to bring feedback chairs and blankets and sleeping mats, to have like a campy on yours type meeting for the for the children's movie, and we don't have that movie set again, but it's in the works. We hope that you will come and attend our events, and I will say, please, if you're ready, please speak to me.
I gotta ask you a question. I have been this presentation your last time this year.
Sousa.
Sousa.
Yeah. Like, well, I don't use Sue. We're a star.
I'm, I always am hard.
People say Sousa a lot.
Well, I apologize. Now, more not.
It really does.
Exactly. Yeah, I've related to him a lot.
I am definitely looking forward to this, I've been thinking about it ever since y'all first proposed it, and I always knew that this being where we located, I hear about them and having the ads and stuff, and I think this is gonna, I'm, I'm excited, so, uh, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. And, uh, Voice Mentions is providing all of our hash and uh, containers, missing words. So, um, great part, so that's really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So that's a great group, a lot of great work. Marathon is next weekend, so if you get on Marathon route, um, please do not give a lot of board.
Yeah, they actually closed the street.
Yeah.
Some of the neighbors.
There will not be up here this time, I'm running the half, so.
So we missed the pickup last Saturday, uh, due to the, I.
The weather was there, but we everything over on Memorial downtown, we did represent Kevin and Derek, so I think they just found a few people trying to park car, walk by park, took a picture with them, they, you know, they got. Weather was bad, there's the memorial, so it's, it's okay, you know.
I'm gonna stay checking. Yeah, 'cause they, you know, we have old trash when they pick up trash, so we definitely don't want that to be on. The news media, we trash them. But thank you.
Okay, are there any, uh, we're, we're down to, uh, any, anybody that, uh, filled out a form?
Audrey's.
Audrey's the one.
That's it.
Great job, you represented the group well. Okay, so that, we're just down to council member comments, the most important part of the.
About Jan.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so there actually is some ass in that form.
Well, I just have one thing, uh, Assistant City Attorney Catherine Walker, uh, let us know early this month that she's coming back to the city long, uh, maybe this month.
What'd you say? We can't do that, sorry.
I'm sorry, uh, Catherine Walker, this works at our firm, uh, doesn't need the assistant city attorney, six months, you know, probably, uh, will be leaving our firm. Will be back to the city.
What, what's your vote for us?
So, yes.
Okay, so John, would you like to lead the floor?
I have no votes.
Mark this day in history.
No comment, I believe the bill, I don't, I have no.
Is John over here?
Now, I'll at least talk here this week, what are you talking about?
Well, before I say anything.
You're, I was just saying, great.
Before I say anymore, but, um, this, this will be my last time on the microphone in this capacity. Um, and so, I am grateful for the time that I've had as the ward three representative for city council, and, um, I'll be honest, I am looking forward to, uh, getting involved in other ways, because it really did kind of cut my teeth. When you showed the picture of Kathy, I kind of got the clump, 'cause I, she was really one of the first people that I actually was able to communicate with when I had, you know, things going on that I didn't know even how to start to create a dialogue with the people that represent us in this capacity, and she made me feel very welcome to, um, state, you know, my, my issues and, um, and, and showed me a very strong role model in this capacity, and I, I will be forever grateful to her. Um, and so, as I, uh, transition into, back into my regular capacity, um, I do want to say that everything that I've encountered and the experiences that I've had here um, have all been a growing opportunity, and I will say, I still am yet to find out who's not paying their traction bill. And I am still concerned about that, because I pay mine every, you know, every time it's due, so. Uh, those are things that we definitely, even though we're a small, small city, those are things that, um, if we have a, if we have a particular system, uh, people apply for, you know, some type of hardship or whatever, those are things that we can do, but if they, if we have somebody that's not paying, I, I don't care, it's two people or two twenty people or two hundred people, uh, we, we definitely want to know, you know, uh, because all the residents are required to take care of their, um, their debt, so. Anyway, um, and then the last thing I have is, um, I had made some comments at our last, uh, council meeting regarding my observations of some things, and I, I don't plan on, uh, turning my eye away from that. Um, I still do believe that we do have a situation, um, from my numbers, don't, numbers don't lie. If you, if you have any questions or any concerns, or I think that there's a, uh, an issue, um, come on Thursday nights when they got traffic report and see, uh, who's sitting in the, in the pews that you're sitting in right now, and, uh, what that, what that crowd looks like. And so, uh, as I conclude, um, again, I am grateful for this opportunity. I am, uh, here to represent the people who elected me. Um, I enjoy making friends and, uh, having colleagues that, uh, I can be, I can respect and respect me. Um, and, uh, I think that as long as that respect is mutual, we can do so much together, and I'm looking forward to all the beautiful things on the horizon. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm just thinking for a second. Should I go on, Braxton?
Yeah.
Braxton?
I'll watch. Hey, guys, I appreciate your comments, does that mean profile?
Pardon?
You say your profile?
Um, I don't use those terminologies, um, but I would say, um, as I stated before, um, if you have any concerns about anything that I've said, you can come and see it for yourself on Thursday nights, uh, during traffic report.
I've been here since nineteen fifty-nine, I've never seen anything like that.
Okay.
So that's just my, that's my comment, it's my turn to make a comment.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, I, I'd like to just point out a couple of things. If you guys go back and read, um, all of our department heads that sit out there, have to do reports and everything, it's just really, really encouraging, it's really amazing. What they do, and they, how the training goes, we can sit here a lot, and we go, oh, yeah, they just finished a street. Well, they didn't just do that, you know, they had a hundred and ninety hours of training, they had, you know, so many hours of, of service to each, you know, house to beat them or street to beat them. It's just amazing if you go through this, and I think sometime I'm just gonna sit here and read it for everybody, so you can see, you can read it, and you, you know, you go through it, and, and I'd like to really concentrate for just a second uh, for several reasons now on our business part. Um, if, if you would look back and, and maybe you could say a few words about, um, our polar plunge, David, I think, I think that was something that was really kind of a fun thing to, to understand, and I'm sure see. Uh, and then all the other activities with the, uh, it looks like here we've got a lot of pictures with who's a southern wood Ken guy that's up here.
Yeah, no, no, I'm. I'm hurting.
That's, that's amazing for the city and the village to be able to communicate with, uh, you know, one of the cities, one of the city's greatest, you know, assets. So it's kind of nice, and you know, we're around, have around everywhere, and you see our officers are very involved, um, and you just go back to the officer's training, um, what they just did this week, this, uh, about this week, this month, it's, 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 it's got all the different things in it, but, uh, we had officers that completed state guard weapons qualifications, we had boys evaluations going on, we had officer of field that did the trauma law enforcement. We had many officers that did, um, this, this, this kind of cyber, um, group that had, has something to do with the theologians and adversity incidents reports. We had medics who attended distracting driving classes. You know, it's everything that you don't think of as an individual, but I'm, I, I'm distracted every time I drive. It's distracting, so. So, I mean, these guys are learning how to. So, I mean, these guys are learning how to either deal with it or recognize that it can save a life because we all know that we're on cell phones and, you know, crashes happening and people get hurt. It's just part of our life. These guys are recognizing it, they're trying to take care of responsibly how to handle it, you know, because everybody goes, where's my phone? I can talk to them. Well, here's, here's what we're trying to do. These guys just don't slap a ticket on you and send you into traffic report, you know, they just don't do that. We, they, they completed hundreds of training hours. And we have supervisors that we did supervisor sport. They do, they just played in the, in the special Olympics. They, they were in, in our school systems, they're every one of our grade schools. They're, they're around, they're patrolling. We get to see a dispatch log as city manager, city council members. It's a daily activity of what happens every day and night for that day. I enjoy reading it because I get to see what, what areas of town are having some kind of trouble. I get to see what the officers are actually doing because it says so on the report. And it's an actual report that comes into our police department, it's not my head. So, I, I get to see things like, you know, we have a, maybe a homeless person that's hanging around on cue, how they handle that. They didn't go bump him in the head and kick him out and say leave. They try to find a place or whatever, they helped him out or they did something else with him. That's on the report. If they were bumping him in the head and kicking him out, it would have been on the report. It's not on the report and that's not what happened. We get to see, I think, just the other day, Bruce Mulroon's dad died. The sober officer, I saw him at the area, of the, of the city. He had lived with, with Bruce and Kim for a long time. I think he was having some health problems, health issues, but Kim, Kim saw me on the front yard one day and she walked, she walked up to me and she said, I've got a ted, I've got a teddy bear. It's one of the best experiences that we have had at the time, to breathe. She said, you know, Bruce's dad asked, and she said, the police were there, the fire department was there. They took over completely, they handled everything respectfully and, you know, just right down the line like we're supposed to do. They ended up calling it a funeral home for him and did all, all that kind of stuff. And, and what's amazing is that they got more because they're village, they're connected to the village as you would be or I would be, and I've been through that. That, you know, you just don't see that in their cities. It's incredible and it's all from training and it's all from the, the heads, people that lead the department. You've got one of the best police chiefs in Oklahoma leading this office. And I've dealt with him before he was where he is now. I, we dealt with him when he was teaching, um, classes for the police academy, which was really interesting. People that have character don't do things or don't let people do things when they're in control. It violates other people's rights. If they do, we're gonna hear about it, they're gonna bring charges or whatever. I haven't seen or heard of that. I haven't heard about that. I've lived here since nineteen fifty-nine, there's six years of college and yard. I have gone to John Marshall through all the years. I've driven my cars through all the years. I have never once been stopped by a police officer. I was stopped one time when I was seventeen years old, driving down the street. I ran over a beer can and it popped up and there was a police behind me. He thought I might have thrown it out of my car. He stopped me, I looked at him and said, no, what problem? I didn't. He went down and saw the beer can, it was crushed, he said, I'm sorry, I just saw that happen. And so, I just assumed he threw it out of the garden, I said, oh, man, no, I'm seventeen years old. I can barely drive. So, in any event, you know, there's, there's, there's a, I was reading one of, whatever our notes, she literally came through the log of dispatches, I think it was on the fifteenth, maybe. This is from, and she called the police into the police department to report this and discuss all the law. She says, Rachel Bulb called in to say she was pulled over today and received a citation for the first time ever. Okay, let's back it up. She's probably thirty, forty, maybe even fifty years old. For the very first time, she was pulled over by a police officer. I'm driving, lights are on, I was there tonight and still, all of a sudden, I'm getting ready to go into a traumatic experience. I'm, what do I do? Do I administer a drug? You know, it's like me, everything's hidden in my glove compartment, it'll take me two days to get out. I mean, what do you, you know, she's thinking what's going on. She says, she was pulled over today, she received a citation, the first time ever that I've ever received a citation. The officer that, that, that was with her made the experience an easy one with all this kindness. Okay, what does that mean? It means his training, he, he realized this is a lady that's probably really, not only confused, you know, what do I do? Did I do something really wrong? He had to talk her down, you know, make her feel good. And, and all of a sudden, she's got a good experience with the police and she's gonna go, like she did now, this is a great, this was a great experience for the officer. This officer who did this was probably his first week or two out of field training. So, he was completely, he could have gone either way, he could have been a, a, a V guy or he could, his character could have, you know, come in to play, and which it did. His training taught him, his, his, his chief of police working with him, his lieutenants and other people working with him, kind of worked him through the process of people, you know, of, of how you police people. They're all different, we're all different. You've got good character, you've got bad there, you've got an opponent to respond to. But this is an officer that was just out of field officer training, which means you go with the police officer, which we did, one of our officers were, what, sixty weeks, sixty weeks, something like that. So, you can get a feel of what goes on in the village and, and our, our field officer training, train ten as we go. Sometimes we'll let him do the stops, sometimes we'll let him. From that field training, you get a report like this. And, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, you guys don't see this, you don't understand what happens out there sometimes. Sometimes a new school up, things happen up and that's, we have to let the police take care of it. And if, if there's a problem, it's back to where it's supposed to go. So, I want y'all to understand that, you know, not only the village, Oklahoma City goes through all those too, but you've got such a great group here that it's just, it's, it's just impossible for you not to have. Getting back to my driver, when I was young, and again, and that was a long time ago, you guys, I, I, I got my license in sixty-two. When I was young, we all.
You see ours back then?
Yeah, I think I was twenty. We, or maybe that was twenty, we graduated. We had, we, we all drove those cars, we all went to the village. Some of us didn't live in the village, but all of us were. I have not had one, one person ever, up to my sixties, ever look at me and say, you guys profile? Are you guys, you know, are you red, are they stopping people with other colors just because they're coming to the village? The only thing I've ever heard, which I laughed at, was, don't come in the village and kind of watch a speeding ticket. You guys, it's a speeding traffic. And I've heard that all my life and I bet you have to, you know, and I bet most of the people have this. Maybe in the fifties or sixties, I don't know if it was a speeding traffic. That's the only traffic I've ever heard of in my life or ever experienced or ever heard kids talk about at school or ever heard teachers talk about or anything like that. There has never been anything of a tragic proportion like that. It's happening today. I will tell you right now, it's not happening today. We can dig into what, what really is going on, okay? Get with the chief and talk about it, figure out, go through all the records and, but that's not happening here. We don't profile. We don't stop people just because of their height, their weight. If they did, I'd stop every day. You know, so it's just things like that that I think we all want to just, you know, look, look at what really goes on in the village. If something bad happens sometimes, okay, it's gonna happen. That'll, that'll be another discussion. We have people to take care of that. By and large, ninety-five hundred people and then thousands that come through the village daily. Have you had any, has anybody had any newspaper reports of anything that's been really bad from the traffic stop? You know, I know we, we get a lot with drugs, we live a lot with alcohol. These guys take care of it. We've never heard somebody beat nothing because they're, they were drunk and popped off. I mean, that just doesn't, and, but I, you know, sometimes your people say something like that and you kind of, I kind of go, have you ever spoken to the village? Have you talked to people that live through this? So, that's, that's kind of all I wanted to say. And mainly because this report right here, it tells you, you go through here and you can see every single thing. These guys go through fire, street, you know, like plant, their training, their managers talk to them. They work with, they've done, and they did some job, reorganizing and having a different approach to some of the things that we do. So, anyway, it's, it's, it's a transition, things change, you know, we're, look at us. I'm here, I'm the best looking guy, it just changes though, you know? So, that's all I have aside and I'll stay around.
I would like to respectfully say that you will never know some of your experiences of myself and some of the people that I've been talking to. So, I can understand historically what you're speaking about, but you will never understand what it feels like to experience what I talked about. And so, respectfully, you can have your experiences and the people that I represent have their experiences as well. Not to say I did not use the language that we are profiling, but as I say, if you have any questions, come on traffic report. You can see it for yourself.
Yes, my dear. I would like to thank everybody that did part of the cleaning for the Brick Road project. This was the first yard I missed, I was planning on being there. In fact, I went up this Saturday, I thought it was a couple of Saturdays ago. And I wonder if I could work any cars in the parking lot. But it's, it, there's a lot of camaraderie with it, it, it takes a little time. A lot of cigarette beds, a lot of, I didn't really like people smoking. But, but I, I had said in a, in a, one of the message boards that I had never been, never been at, visited before and was gonna be there this time. But I was out of town, so I, I hope it went well, I don't know.
It did, Dave, it went, it went well. It took us about two hours and we got it, we got it all cleaned up. But yeah, there's more cigarette beds out there. It's surprising how many.
It really is.
And the rain actually held off until after we got the move. It was cold, but it didn't rain on this.
Okay, well, glad to be here tonight and to get apologies. I, I really enjoyed it, it's a, it's a fun group of people to show up. But also, I think, I don't know if there's a organized place for cheering. I'm, I'm on the first street of, of the village coming up, um, coming up. I don't know, I just want.
Is it in the street to go on?
This street here. No, no, wait, I don't know where. But they come up way over. They come up way over late and I'll go up there for a couple of hours and, and cheer them as they arrive in the village. Some of them are really dedicated, gonna sell all sorts of records and they buy. And then some of them are having a good time and then there's some that wish they hadn't signed up for the twenty-four. I heard that you wore a tech top, tennis shoes, you kind of run along with them.
You can get your own village t-shirt at CBS.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I have these comics.
But anyway, if you can come and cheer them on, it's, it's, they tell me it's meaningful. So, I mean, I have to believe them because some of them really need this support because we're at like the halfway spot, you know, if they're doing the whole, the full thing. And I think it's for, the, the later ones coming is, it clearly has said in their mind that this was a big mistake.
And that's it. What are they doing? Next, this Saturday?
Yeah.
I mean, Sunday, Sunday, Sunday morning, Sunday.
Basically, it's up on six thirty.
They, they come up Georgia Avenue to, not Georgia.
Wayberly.
Wayberly, they come up Wayberly to Britain and over now, it's kind of new. Last year was the first number?
Oh, that's, that's.
So, you're right.
Yeah, they turn that over to.
That block still, you go that block and so back into nickel cells across. So, it used to go out by the lady, but they don't go around like.
Apparently, our wind was more of a challenge than.
Yo.
That wasn't my idea.
You hit the north end of that lake because I questioned your license.
But anyway, that gives us more village time because they, they run down through the village and, and I guess over to May or, but anyway, it's a fun time. And sorry, I missed one cleaning, but everybody go out and cheer them on because that's something unique to Oklahoma City. And if you didn't see the National Geographic, oh, what's, what's, that's not it. National Geographic, yeah, National Geographic. They did a three-part thing on Oklahoma City bombing a couple of nights ago.
On Netflix, wasn't it?
It could have been. I, I was out in New Mexico and I don't know what TV station I, I had on, but I, I thought it was just like gonna be one hour and then it's gonna continue. And I thought it was two hours and it turned out to be three hours. But it was very, very well done. And, and it's new, I thought it was like when they had done a few years after it was over and they were just replaining, but I mean, the people that were interviewing were clearly in their fifties and sixties and seventies, they weren't in the days, you know.
For the record, it's third, this is our third view.
Yeah, yeah.
You know how I know? My son's here, I remember. I had just went back to work, returned.
Yeah. It's, but it was really neat, the perspective all these years later. And, and you know, one of the things they said was for those that were for the death penalty and we got the death penalty and they were all very pleased and, and they said, well, you know, what this has meant to you, this is, it means justice. And they said, all the people that they asked about that, they, they weren't talking about, it, it, it puts me at peace. None of them said that, they just said it, it was justice served. So, I, I never thought to tie the two together, but that's, they did. And it was, so I think they're gonna have to play it somewhere else sometime because it's, it's too well done just to let it. So, you, you might look it up, it might be on YouTube somewhere.
Netflix has one.
Netflix?
Yeah, Netflix has one, I saw the advertisements a few days ago.
There's also one on Disney Plus on FGA.
Okay, well, that's the one that it was, it was.
And the one you watched.
I did, yes, that's.
It was really interesting.
It was, it was very, very well done and. And you just say, damn, I can't believe all that stuff came together after the bombing and then nobody knows what's going on. In like in three days, they had him arrested and in court. I mean, you, you just go, wow, how did that all happen so fast? And everybody seemingly was in the right place at the right time.
The guy that we went, we went down and talked to in the, at the police, already getting the FBI here. He's like, I have a friend who worked with the FBI, and he said, the first thing I was, he said to Tim was, you know why I'm here? He said, yeah, this is the Oklahoma City bombing. He immediately said that.
Yeah. And, and by the way, I saw, I saw yesterday, the policeman that pulled him over over by Perry, they named him, they honoring him with a mile of like thirty-five for, for having been the guy that recognized something that looked funny.
I got full on because you know.
Oh, license plate, yeah. Step number one, step number two, he didn't want to step out, then when he did, he got combat boots and a military aircraft.
And gun.
And he had a gun. So, anyway, okay, I'm ready. Anybody else have anything for the, the good of the order? See none? Thank you for being here. Oh, introduction, it's Mike Kelly, my name is Ross Street, thanks for coming tonight. You can give me a, 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 after work report.
And there you go.
Yes, and there you are.